In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice that this work session, regular meeting at the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building and township website electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers indicating that this work session, regular meeting would take place in the municipal building, council chambers, at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 10, 2022.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Kimberly Francois. The allegiance to the flag of the.
Oh, God, the Creator and Redeemer of all the faithful, here are supplications and through thy infinite love and mercy, graciously grant us the strength and power in our thoughts and decisions, be for the benefit of all people at all.
Notice we're having trouble unmuting in a different way. Madam Master Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yeah.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Udine?
Here.
Councilman Vasanella?
Right.
Councilman like.
Councilman Onijaka, would you like to present the proclamation honoring?
On the 21st.
Oh, okay. You didn't want that on the agenda. Event.
Just on the day of the event.
All right. Thank you. So now we're up to public discussion to have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are now open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on matters of government may come to the microphone, state your name and address. You're up for five minutes. No wielding of time, and you may only come up once. Whoever wishes to speak, come on up.
Mayor, seeing no one coming up to speak, I'll motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
A motion and a second, all in favor of closing the public portion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we'll close the public portion. Let us begin with council comments. We will start with Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So from our last meeting to now, I have attended a couple meetings. One was a celebration party held in Edison by the American Muslim Council, and that one had a lot of dignitaries, including a couple of our Franklin Township leaders, including BOE folks, as well as HRC, and a few of our key leaders. I've also attended the Single De Mayo event for the Franklin Chamber of Commerce, where I met with a couple of our key Franklin businesses. And I know Councilman Embarrassan can provide more insight to this, but we're working together to see if we can partner and create a platform for our local businesses to understand ideas, generating ideas, promoting them in town, and seeing what we can do in terms of just learning about them more and making sure that our folks, our residents, know who they are. I've also attended an event in New York for the Bamadish Chamber of Commerce, where I met with a couple of key leaders, including Franklin being represented by myself, and then a couple of their key leaders throughout central Jersey. And just very recently today, I have attended Canal Walk residence, where there was a small gathering in Canal Walk, and I was requested to be part of their cooking show, where I cooked a meal with the guests of Canal Walk and that I'm meeting green, discussing things that we can come together for the residents. And, you know, I really had a good time there today, meeting a lot of new faces, a lot of new people that moved into Franklin, excited to be here. And they were very excited to see that the local government got involved and is very hands-on with the residents. So I will continue to meet with folks and work to in the coming weeks. I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
To Councilman Vasanella.
Thank you, Mayor. So this year, we're having a Memorial Day parade, and I don't know the exact details, but if your group wants to get involved, I think there still may be time. I'm not sure, Mayor, if Mr. Lecord is again coordinating it.
He is.
He is? Okay, thank you. We haven't had one, obviously, in a couple of years. So please come out whether as an organization marching in the parade or to come see the beautiful Memorial Celebration we do at the mile out in front of the municipal buildings as a spectator, but please enjoy. The other thing I want to mention, we just had a public works committee meeting, Councilman Tasnik, Councilman Rahm, Councilwoman Udine. We got a chance to go over what hopefully will lead to final list to as far as roads being paved. This probably will be the biggest year for road repaving, probably in a decade, linear feet-wise, and very ambitious and looking ahead at next year. It looks like we will be on track of where we want to be. And of course, that's affected by the prices for the products for paving, but we also have some opportunities for state aid and some federal aid. So we are going to be very busy as far as that's concerned, and we are also working on park maintenance, as this, of course, is the time of year. If you see anything at a neighborhood park or any park that you may go to that needs attending to, you can use the same online portal that you do for building potholes and other issues relevant to public works. I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kimberly Francois.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand it was on Facebook Live, I was just told, by Councilman Rahm, but yesterday I attended at the Sister to Sister facility, and we received, I do sit on the professional advisory board, and we received a $100,000 grant award for the renovation of the building. And Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman was our guest of honor, and she spoke. We had a very nice attendance, a very, very nice event, and that $100,000 will be utilized to renovate the kitchen and a couple of other parts of the building. We were very grateful for her to be there. And also, Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman will also be in attendance at the grand opening of the Franklin Township Youth Center on this upcoming Saturday, May 14th, Saturday, May 14th, over at 429 Lewis Street. Can talk with a mask or without a mask, I don't know what's going on here today. And so there will be a grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony at 1:00 PM for the public. And what we plan on doing is having people sign up for tours and tour the facility. And then at 5:00, we'll also have a youth fest. There will be refreshments, fun-filled evening of free recreation. Everything will be free, free fun activities. You can come out and attend some information sessions for the parents and also have the young people, the youth, sign up to be members of the youth center. And you can also learn about the center programs and meet our service providers and learn about all the wonderful activities that will be going on in the youth center. So again, that will be on this upcoming Saturday, May 14th, at 1:00 PM at 429 Lewis Street. And our Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman will be there. We are receiving a million-dollar grant award for the construction of the youth center as well. So it's going to be a really nice event.
I'm Juan Camal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Woman, Councilman Rahm Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right off the top, I have an announcement to make that will benefit quite a number of Franklin residents. This is President Biden's high-speed internet access to 48 million people in the country. The plan is, I already checked with our township manager, the two providers are participating, Comcast and Verizon. So if you are eligible, the eligibility criteria is quite wide. If you are on any sort of government assistance program, you know, SNAP, WIC, housing vouchers, disability, income, social security disability, or if you are below the income levels, for example, family of four, if your income is $55,500 a year, then you qualify for this low-cost, high-speed internet access. $30 a month, it is available to everybody. Forty-eight million people are going to benefit from it. So I would want to get this message out to our folks, both the newspapers that are here. Please get them out. Township manager is going to publicize that in our website, Nixel and Facebook. We are going to blast it out throughout the town, and hopefully lots of our residents would be benefiting from that. Thank you, President Biden. Other than that, we had a number of monthly committee meetings, Suresh Authority meeting, where Councilman Francois and I attend, as well as the Historic Commission and HRC. I just want to give a shout out to the Historic Commissioners, Historic Council Commissioners. They are doing a fantastic job. The chairman, Andrew Bullion, is a terrific chairman. He tries to help all the applicants to comply with the code and the law, and it's a very, very useful commission, and I really appreciate their work. The HRC, we had Derek Smith, the new executive director of Franklin Food Bank came over and talked to us about his vision and all the things that they are undertaking to make the food bank better. You know, due to COVID, they were hamstrung with funds, and they did one fundraising, which they raised a lot of money, which was really good, and they are continuing to do others. And they ask all our residents to pitch in to fight the hunger in our town. And Councilwoman Udine mentioned about our outreach, effort to outreach our businesses. So there's a couple of things that we are doing. One is we are building a master list of all the businesses in town. We are collecting emails and phone numbers of them so that we can reach out to them instantly with any useful information, as well as it's a forum for them to reach us when they need any assistance or any issues that we have to solve for them. Other than that, there was a, in the last two weeks, this is the fusion, this is the cultural diversity that we are blessed with in this country and in this area. I attended two events. One is a Hinduism exhibition, which basically is a half-a-day event where a lot of information and details about Hinduism and its history, rich history and ancient history, 5,000 years-old religion, you know, over a billion followers, practitioners of Hinduism. So there was an exhibition in North Brunswick, a council arranged it, so I attended that. And then last week, an Edison council arranged a Eid, I'm going to butcher this name, sorry, Councilwoman Udine, Eid al-Fitr. I think that started. Anyway, it's a breaking of the fast after the month-long Ramadan festival. So those are, it's great to see all our many leaders from the state come there, as well as some other dignitaries. But it's a Muslim community and the local community coming together. It was great. And the last but not least, there was a one-day state of the state of manufacturing in Trenton, organized by NJMEP, that's an annual event. I got invited to go to that one this year. And, you know, there were 11,000 manufacturers in New Jersey. You wouldn't know this, you know, without hearing what they have to say to us. And there were a lot of discussions, a lot of ideas exchanged between the manufacturers and the lawmakers and other leaders. A very good event in Trenton, annual event. If you have a chance, read about it. It's a fantastic event. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You can, Councilman Charles Onijaka.
Thanks, Mayor. The topic of redistricting, we had used in JFK Club, was very, very helpful, and also was an eye-opener. Special thanks to the organizers. My World War III is affected by this recent, by the recent redistricting. At least 25% of the world has been shoveled. At the same time, the area that is affected is a strong part of the world, and no doubt this will actually affect the dynamics and the equation of the world. So by listening to what they said yesterday about the redistricting, gives me the opportunity to learn more about it and to know how to work with it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Edward Potasnik.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wasn't here at the last meeting, so I just want to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day, particularly the two moms who serve on council, Councilwoman Kimberly Francois and Councilwoman Shipa Udine, and all the folks who play the role of mother in different ways, maybe not biological. Thank you for what you do for our community. I had a great time with my mom. Nice to celebrate. Tonight on the agenda is our budget, and one thing that I just wanted to highlight that I'm particularly pleased with, and I know the folks in the public works committee have been working hard over the years, is an increase in investment in paving across the municipality. Generally, it's been around $2.5 million, and this year we'll see an extra $1 million put in to maintain our roads. And, you know, the roads that are on the list are the ones that are in most need of repair and, you know, will help us get, you know, ahead or catch up, however you want to look at it. But it is, you know, a big town, and there are a lot of needs as we go across the community. And then additionally, I was at the Arbor Day celebration that the Environmental Commission put together with the Shade Tree Commission in the lead, and it was really fantastic over at the Kingston School, and they planted a beautiful tree and gave out saplings over 100 to the community members who attended. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to former Councilman Chase, the chairman of the Shade Tree Commission, Chairman Williams, as well as the vice chair, Vice Chair Smith, and all the folks who came out. It was, I think, the 150th anniversary of Arbor Day, and the council passed a resolution, which I was able to read. And it was really just a nice, beautiful day with the cherry blossoms and, you know, talking about how much we need and depend on trees for our air that we breathe and the oxygen. And the little youngster there, I did ask her why trees are important, and she got a little nervous, but her mom helped out and said, "Oxygen." Well, in addition, they provide canopy for us, which cools us down and absorbs a lot of the heat from the sun, and they're just an integral part to keep the earth together so we don't have mudslides, like are all too often in other parts of the country, particularly California. So with that, that's all the comments I have today. Congratulations to you guys.
Councilmember, Councilman Carl Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to keep us moving here, the only thing I would have to report on is the parade that we're going to have to celebrate Juneteenth. It'll take place on 6/18 of 2022. We'll be starting at the Pine Grove School, going up Franklin Boulevard, left on Hamilton, right on Matilda, and dump us right into the park. The parade should be from floats. I've just been contacted by our two beautiful fire departments, East Franklin and Community, they will definitely be in the parade and come to the parks. Everybody that always wants to be a fire person, come on down and you can practice on our fire trucks. Anyone else? Listen, line the streets. If you want to participate, definitely, you know, give us a jingle. But it is something that, Juneteenth is a day that, as an African American, I celebrate. But more importantly, you don't have to be an African American to celebrate Juneteenth. It's a holiday where everyone can celebrate. It's a holiday about freedom, and that's why we're here in this great country, and that's to look for and be a part of freedom. So come on down, June 18th, come on, party with us. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Hey, Councilman, Deputy Mayor Crystal Pruitt.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies, I was not at our last council meeting as I was out of town, and I feel like I've spent a lot of these past weeks out of town. But I do want to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day. Just, you know, continue to uplift what Councilman Wright said about the Juneteenth parade, as that is fast approaching, as well as the Memorial Day parade, which will happen before it. And I'm looking forward to this weekend and celebrating the grand opening of our youth center. But beyond that, updates. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor. My comments, just like to thank everyone who sent condolences to me about my mother. Very heartwarming. It's over to you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very little to report. I just want to let everyone know, one of our more popular programs in a township annually is the Youth Police Academy. This year's Youth Police Academy is going to run from July 14th to July 22nd at the Franklin Middle School SGS campus, right across the street from us here. Applications are available. You can apply online through the township website. It is on the homepage, it's one of the big blocks at the bottom of the homepage. If you do not have internet access, but you're seeing this on TV, or you want to tell someone who doesn't have internet access and their child wants to participate, they can contact the police non-emergency number 732-873-5533. And it is for 8th through 12th grade only. So 8th to 12th grade. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Mayor.
We are now on to council discussion items. There are none. Approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council for their consideration. Work session, regular meeting for February 8th, February 22nd, March 8th, April 12th, and April 26th, and then the budget hearings of March 7th and March 15th. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anyone have corrections? Minutes or a comment? Done. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Time to pay the bills, warrants in the amount of $2,244,819.2 on May 10th. I present the township council for payment. Do we have a motion? Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. That's the smallest warrant I've ever seen. Any other discussion?
ended a temporary budget.
Ah, any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
It's time to hopefully pass the budget. Calendar year 2022 municipal budget hearing and adoption. First, we have a resolution to authorize to read the calendar year 2022 municipal budget by title only. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
But I always have a fear you guys are going to vote in. But you would suffer too, so. It is now time for a public hearing on the calendar year 2022 municipal budget as introduced. We're unlucky, maybe we start one. So do we have a motion to open to the public?
I hope so. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open to the public to discuss the budget only. Anyone wishing to speak? Do so.
Mayor, seeing no one coming to speak on the budget or closing hearing on the municipal budget.
Have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. So now I have resolution 22175, adoption of the calendar year municipal budget as introduced. Do we have a motion on the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
So the budget is passed, and we had a PowerPoint presentation to go over some of the highlights of it. It doesn't look like it's coming up, so I'll just do it out of.
I'm trying to get it up.
All right, I can do it offhand. The major point of the budget is, this budget is, I have to do this out of memory now, $13 million more than last year's budget. And I want to explain why. I want to make sure everyone knows. And that's $13 million of $60 million going to $73 million. This was an intentional increase on part of the council, well, in part. The biggest part of that increase is actually money from the federal government. Because of COVID, the American Rescue Plan, is that the right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So that takes into account $7.3 million. The other big part of it is money that comes out of what we call our fund balance, it's also called surplus. You can think of it as the bank account that we have. We have $28 million in that bank account. The Financial Oversight Committee has decided that the ideal amount would be $22 million. So there's an excess of $6 million. I've often said here, the only thing worse than tax and spend is tax and not spend, because we take the money from you and then we don't use it for anything. So we have $6 million burning a hole in our pocket, so to speak, and we want to spend that down. We want to give that back to the people in the form of services, and you've heard it mentioned at least twice tonight, paving. We, and Councilman Vasanella is very much a part of this. He and I have pushed very hard to do paving. I remember a former mayor arguing that we should only do 600,000. I remember a former mayor arguing that we should only do $600,000 worth of paving a year. We do $2 to $2.5 million a year, and we thought that was going to catch us up. And unfortunately, with inflation and traffic, we're getting behind. So adding another $1 million to that, and we're going to try to catch up. And we're going to start being as aggressive as we can with paving. The other part of that increase is things that we can't control, such as the library tax. Library tax is up a half a million dollars. Library tax is determined by a state-regulated formula. We have no control of that. And then the one part of your taxes that absolutely does depend on your assessment is the open space tax, which was passed by photo referendum, which is five cents per hundred. So if your assessment goes up, your tax automatically goes up. The amount that we've increased, we have increased the levy, which is the amount that's paid by taxes, by 1%. But when we did that, because the assessments around the town have gone up by more than the assessments of average house has gone up. So in other words, the way we calculate the tax rate is by taking the amount to be paid by taxes, dividing it by the total assessment for the entire town, which is now 11 billion?
About 12 billion.
$12 billion. So that determines the tax rate. But the total assessment of the town went up more than the assessment of the average home. So because of that, the tax rate came down. Came down enough so that our increase in taxes actually meant a $12 decrease for the average home. Now, you then add in the open space tax and the library tax, I just talked about it, they increased by $33. So there is a tax increase of $21 to the average home. The average home being just under $400,000. You should expect next year that the budget will go down, because we're not going to have that money coming from the American Rescue Plan. We'll be getting some FEMA money hopefully by next year from IDA.
That should have no impact on the budget, Mayor. Generally, FEMA reimbursements for expenses during an emergency by FEMA are usually what we call miscellaneous revenue, not anticipated, MIRNA, you'll hear us say from time to time. So that's unanticipated revenue, so it doesn't, it's not included as revenue for the budget purposes.
So if you hear council increased taxes by, I don't know what percent, would be 13 over 70%, now you'll understand why. Basically, to return the money to you and to pass through the grant that we got from the federal government. That was essentially my slideshow. So we now have passed the budget, and we are on to public hearings and ordinances, the second readings. The way it works is there's a first reading to announce to the public that we're going to consider an ordinance. And on second reading, we have a public hearing. We allow the public to speak about the ordinances. These are all second readings, and I have a habit of explaining each ordinance, but basically, all of these ordinances are to appropriate or to bond or to basically exercise the money that we just set aside by the budget. We are now beginning to act on the budget. So there are, I believe, four ordinances that we're going to go through, and there will be a public hearing on each one. So ordinance 436322, bond ordinance providing for various 2022 capital improvements and equipment acquisitions by and in the township of Franklin, in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $3,305,158. Therefore, and authorizing the insurance issuance of $3,140,000 of bonds or notes of township to finance. Part of the cost thereof is presented to the public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, or a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance only, please come to the mic.
Seeing no one coming forward, Mayor, a motion to close a public portion of hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion on the item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
So the last bond ordinance was on the township money. Now, the next one's basically the same thing, but on the water utility. Ordinance 436422, bond ordinance providing for various 2022 capital improvements for the water utility, buying in the township of Franklin, in the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, appropriating $5,400,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $5,400,000 bonds or notes for the township of Franklin to the cost thereof is presented for the public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required, or have emotions open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Public portion is open. Speak on this ordinance. Please come to the mic.
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward from the public, I'll motion to close the public portion of the hearing on the ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
The next, it passes. The next ordinance has to do with the Open Space Trust Fund. Ordinance 436522, capital appropriating $480,000 from the Open Space Trust Fund to pay for various capital acquisitions and improvements for the township of Franklin and the county of Somerset, state of New Jersey, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, or have emotions open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are open to the public. Give you six minutes this time.
Mayor, seeing no one from the public come forward, a motion to close a public portion of hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We are close to the public. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the ordinance? Any other discussion on the ordinance? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes. I think this is the one you were commenting on. Ordinance 4366-22, amendments to the municipal code, chapter 13, boards, committees, commissions, article 18, senior citizen advisory committee, section 13-78, membership is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motion to, anyone have a, this is not a budget item. Anyone have a motion? All right. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're open to the public on this item only. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward from the public, a motion to close a public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried, do we have a motion on the item?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Question?
I'd like to make a comment. So to our advisory representative, councilwoman, I mean, deputy mayor, excuse me. So did this request to remove the Somerset residential from the advisory?
Yes, the senior advisory board requested that their, their, once we vote on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?
Yes.
Councilman Wright?
Yes.
We are now on to the consent agenda. Items A through N is listed in consent agenda. Portions of this meeting are presented to the township for council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item? But just so that it's not understood, Mr. Manager, could you explain item B about the skateboard park?
I'll talk about item B and N, like Nancy, which is the replacement for B. So item B is the rescinding of a resolution awarding a contract for design and construction of Miller Bush Park Skate Park not to exceed $308,589.15. And N is the award of a bid for a contract for Miller Bush Park Skate Park improvements to the same vendor for the same amount of money. This is a technical issue related to a fairly new law that the state of New Jersey passed, I think about two years ago, that this allows design and build contracts for less than $5 million. So we had to split this up and do design in-house through our consulting engineer and, and construction by the company. And so it was done by competitive bid, and the same company that we originally awarded the contract to was the bidder for the contract that's awarded under letter N.
Thank you. I have no idea why that law exists, but maybe there's something that I just don't know about. We often get blamed for doing stupid things, and if you look into it, you can learn something about it, and there's a reason for it, but I can't see that reason. Anyone want to discuss anything else from the consent? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Embarrassen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Councilman Onijaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Potasnik?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine?
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella?[1756.80]